Well, we would like to get started at six o'clock. And for those of you standing in the back, there are some more chairs that are up closer to the front if you'd like to come up front. But we just want to welcome all of you here to this, what we're calling, you know, a special city meeting. And this meeting has been called as the result of a shooting, some shootings that have happened in some of our neighborhoods. It has brought to our attention that we have to do something better than we're doing now. And to help answer that and those questions as to how can we do it better? How can we, how can we do it better as neighbors and citizens? How can we do it better as Hooker City? And how can we do it better as law enforcement officers? The Weaver County Sheriff's Department? We're here pulling all of us together with the idea that we will become a team and work together and resolve these problems that we're starting to experience more and more of. You know, to help us do that, we've invited some people here that's going to help us answer some of these questions that we have. We've invited Sheriff Arbonne, Weaver County Sheriff. We have Chief Perry and Guard. And we have Lieutenant Ryan and Jeffries up here with us. So we really appreciate them being with us. We've also invited our Hooker City's attorney, Reeve Richards, who's our attorney and legal counsel. And also members of our city council are here among us. And so we have Cindy Cox, Ryan Hill, Debbie Maragoni, Bryce Wilcox, and Lisa Northrup. And we really appreciate all of them being here. So having said that, we would like now to turn it over. Chief, if you'd like to just kind of talk a little bit about some of these incidents and kind of lead us into tonight's discussion with the idea that by the time we're done, we're going to have some solutions, some things that we can actually do to do things better. So, Chief.
Thanks, Mayor. As stated, my name's Aaron Perry. I'm the enforcement chief at the sheriff's office. And I just want to start by saying that we understand, as a sheriff's office, that these events can cause fear in the community. Personally, I, in my neighborhood, had a shooting in my neighborhood. It was actually a rental property owned by my brothers. And so I've gone through something similar, and I understand firsthand the fear that these kind of situations can cause. Also, there can be some emotions of frustration. We understand that. There could be frustration of not understanding what's being done. First and foremost, we want everybody to know that we want a safe community. And we're working hard. Since this most recent incident, we've worked really hard from different avenues to not only try to attack that problem, but also look at ways that we can make things better moving forward for the entire community. And I'll go over some of those things that we've done. This has included some time that we've spent with the city attorney discussing options moving forward. First and foremost, I just want to start with some thanks. I want to thank the deputies that work every day. I want to thank those men and women that are willing to put the badge on and go to work every day. It's becoming increasingly hard to maintain our staffing. And I, as an administrator, am just grateful for their willingness to come to work every day and their willingness to respond to these incidents. On this most recent incident, we had eight of our deputies on scene. We had our CSI unit on scene. We also had three officers from Roy City. So I want to express my appreciation to Roy City and the willingness of those officers and their administration of allowing them to come help out during the initial incident. Want to thank those of you in the room that have helped us, that have provided information, video, witness statements, as we try to work on this most recent incident. We currently have investigators actively working this most recent incident. I was listening to the radio the other day, and they were talking about, it was a project at Utah Lake, and somebody on the radio said, you know, "It's not really seen, but there's a lot going on behind the scenes." In law enforcement, some of that stuff needs to stay a little confidential during the active investigation. We have, we have an investigative team assigned to it. Our CSI unit is examining evidence. We have our street crimes unit that is actively working with informants that they have to find out, you know, the talk on the street, the talk to those informants and who's talking, what's going on. So we're looking at this most recent incident from several angles. And we have, we have some promising leads. I'm confident that it's going to lead to a solution, at least identification of those directly involved in this most recent shooting. I want to explain a little bit. For those that aren't familiar, if you can find, if you can find an officer that's been an officer for, I'm going to say, three to four years or more, and has not found frustration with the ability to move criminal charges forward, I'd like to meet that person. We as officers at times get frustrated because there's parts of the system that go beyond us. I mean, personally, I could tell you many stories where I thought I put a really good case together to have the prosecuting attorney's office say, "There's just not enough there to afford charges." Or we move forward with charges. Some part in the process, whether it's a preliminary hearing, the judge throws it out, or later at trial, you go through the trial and you end up losing that case. The burden associated with criminal charges is high, and it should be. We have a good system, but it's a high burden. You have to prove your case beyond a reasonable doubt, and it's a high burden. So as we started looking at this, moving forward, ways that we could do, we thought we needed to think outside of the box, outside of the criminal system and criminal justice system, and see what else can we do? What else can we do to improve the environment? So we looked at some of the surrounding cities and some of the ordinances they've passed to do some other things, such as administrative fees and some other things that you can put on loud parties and other things like that. And Mr. Richards has drafted an ordinance actually for the city. I'll let him cover that here in a minute, what that would look like. That would have, that would have to go to a vote and approval by the council. We have, we have a couple of officers that spent some time at Salt Lake City. They have a similar policy. There's some different, there are ordinance, there's some similarities and some differences, but they said that it worked very effectively down there to help control parties, loud parties, if you will, in addition to criminal sanctions. You know, as I, as I wrap up, we've just asked that you continue to be patient as you're trying to move forward. We'll share what we can. If you have info, reach out to us. We want info. If there happens to be somebody here tonight that knows directly those individuals that were involved, we'd like you to reach out. If somebody reaches out with direct information, if for whatever reason somebody's here that was involved, if you reach out, we'll pass that information on to prosecuting attorneys. Your willingness to be cooperative, we would like that information. I think, I think I'll stop there. We can cover some more of the information in a little bit. I'll let, I'll let Mr. Richards talk a little bit about the ordinance that we discussed.
Thank you, Chief. Criminal cases are not, are not easy. And the challenge, of course, in finding a criminal case is, number one, to identify the perpetrator. And here, that may be the most challenging of all the considerations. The acts that took place are very probably criminal, but if you can't find who did them, you can't really file a charge against anyone. You can't say, "This person was at a party, and this happened at the party, and therefore this person's guilty." You've got to be able to show that the person that you are going to charge is the one that did the act that you're complaining about. So that's the challenge that we have in investigations and in criminal cases. In order to convict someone, as mentioned by the chief, you have to prove that they're guilty beyond a reasonable doubt. That's not, not an easy burden. And for a prosecutor to take a case that they don't think they can prove beyond a reasonable doubt is generally a mistake, because you end up with a case that can't be proven, the person goes free, and it sometimes creates more problems, many times, than if you don't file at all. So prosecutor taking a case is going to have to have enough information that they feel confident, number one, that a crime was committed, and number two, that the person they're charging is the one that committed that crime. So those are the elements that these investigators are working on and will continue to work on. If we can identify the people that were responsible for the shooting, they'll be charged, and we'll make them through the justice system. But that may not be the only way to solve the problem. Sometimes we have situations where noise becomes a real problem. It may be party noise, it may be shooting, as it was in this case, it may be other things. The city does have the ability to pass ordinances that are not criminal necessarily. They would be civil penalties. Some cities have adopted what they call a party ordinance, which says that if the party involves illegal drugs, if it involves youth using alcohol illegally, of course, or if it involves undue noise that is disturbing to the neighbor, that's a, that's a tough one to define. How much noise is too much noise? Is music too much noise? Is shouting too much noise? Is gunfire too much noise? So that's something that a council, the city council, has to think about and decide how to define that so that it's understandable and enforceable. Because the argument that a person charged would make is, "I don't have enough warning that this was violation of law, therefore I can't comply." So you've got to have rules if you're trying to regulate noise and outbursts that people can understand and explain to others. But the ordinances that have been passed in some cities, Salt Lake is a good example, and apparently it's working well, or ordinances that say if you have parties that have one of those three elements, once again, use, using alcohol, use of illicit drugs or illegal drugs, or improper noise that's bothering neighbors, you have the ability then to impose a civil penalty, not a criminal penalty, but a civil penalty against the violators for the cost they're causing the city. Every time a response takes place, there's a cost involved. You have to bring officers in, they have to investigate the case. I need to guess the cost of a case like this one. So the ordinance would provide a penalty, a monetary penalty that would be assessed as a utility bill to violators, the owners of the property where the violation takes place, people who are sponsoring the party, those are all people potentially you could impose a penalty on. And if they don't pay the penalty, then of course you'd turn their water off or whatever other remedies the city might have. That's a, that's a non-criminal remedy. It doesn't require proof beyond a reasonable doubt. It's a civil case, much easier to prove if there is a challenge, and often there isn't a challenge. Often people just pay the penalty and then do their best to make sure it doesn't happen again. So that's a thing our council here, I think, is going to have to take a look at and see if that's a possibility. But that, that would be in conjunction with the continuing investigation of the criminal violations, and if we're able to put a case together, that will happen as well.
Thank you, Reeve. The last thing I'd like to mention is if citizens are here, you're obviously concerned, probably looking for ways that you could help. We have a volunteer policing program that we have where we have vehicles dedicated where you can go out as a volunteer and be an extra set of eyes. Be kind of that early warning. Call us when things are happening if you're interested in that program. Reach out to any one of us. After the meeting, we'll give you the information on how to sign up. That's a great way to be proactive in helping us make the entire community better.
Let me make a comment along that line, too. Probably the most important part of the criminal investigation is getting the information of what happened and getting it early. So you as citizens, if you see something that's questionable and that needs to be investigated, don't hesitate to call. Call 911, get people there to respond. Don't do it to harass someone, but if it's, if it's really something that needs to be looked at, get them there as early as possible. If somebody from the sheriff's office arrives, the chances of escalating to much more serious activity is probably not going to happen. In addition, if you do see an incident like happened here, don't put yourself at risk. Don't go out and get in a fight with somebody, but try to, try to be as observant as you can. If you can take a picture of a car that has a license plate so that we can identify the car that was being used when the shots were fired, or if you can take a picture of a person without, again, putting yourself at risk, try to do that. Be a little proactive in trying to gather information, because once the police arrive, generally it's going to be gone, and people are going to have left, and you can't find them.
And also, just in closing, I just mentioned, if you're not aware of our Code Red system, it's an emergency notification system. You have to register for that. I pulled the registration today from our emergency management department, and there's, not all citizens, it looks like, they show 155 registered by phone and 159, or by cellphone. So we can set up emergencies, different things. We can set up geo fences and send out alerts in shootings and other events, but you have to register. So it's really easy. If you're not aware of the system, you go to our website, Weaver County Sheriff's Office website. On the front page, down on the bottom right-hand corner, look for the information that says Code Red, click on it, and it'll walk you through the registration process. So it actually works off of a geo fence, so if you register your cellphone number, if you're on vacation, you won't get the alert, but you'll get it, or if you don't live in the area, you can register for it. If you travel into the area, then once you're in the area, you'll get it. But that's, I just want to make, make sure that everybody here is aware of that, so you get that information. We had, we had a fire up in the Upper Valley a year ago, and we sent out the Code Red. There was only three, three, I think, people that were registered, that were able to get that information. So that's something useful that doesn't take a lot of time to register. I encourage everyone to do. Yeah, you have a question?
Yeah, it's my understanding you guys didn't send out one of those Code Reds in the situation though. So when is that, what sort of permits were you sending that out?
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. We haven't been using it because a lot of people aren't registered, but we want to start using it. So, so in this situation, it would be good. My understanding is the reason, the logic of why it wasn't used here was once officers got on scene, it was contained, it wasn't an ongoing, it wasn't an ongoing threat. If it was a barricaded subject, if somebody was in the house and it was ongoing, then that's where that would go out. But where this was, there wasn't a threat there at the point that it was discussed of, hey, should we send it out? It was determined that there was no threat to send out to the neighbors. But it could be used for information as well.
If you ask questions, maybe if you'd give your name so we can keep a record of who's asking, that would be helpful.
But there were people in our backyard, and you were shining lights on our windows and our doors. People ran from the party, but there was no danger. We had 30 casings in the neighborhood. I really feel, I'm sorry, but it was big. We had semi-automatic guns, we had it on our cameras. This was dangerous. Somebody that was innocent could have got shot.
So can I get your name?
My name's Jill.
Jill, Jill.
But yeah, but to say that it wasn't dangerous, or nobody could have been hurt.
Yeah, to be clear, I wasn't saying it wasn't dangerous. I was wanting, the immediate danger wasn't there. I think that was the logic in why we didn't use Code Red. We'll do better about sending those out in the future. To be clearly, to be honest, though, our experience with sending it out, we've got a lot of pushback when we do send them out. So we get almost as many complaints when we send them out, because people say, "Hey, why'd you send that out at 2:00 in the morning and wake me up? I've got to go to work in a couple of hours." So, so we'll work through that, like, if we're willing to do it, we'll send it out, and then we'll work through those. I'm guessing a little bit on the logic. I didn't talk to the sergeant involved. You know, that was a decision made in the moment. They were dealing with a DUI in the area, along with dealing with the fire, or dealing with the incident at hand, but yeah, we can send those out.
Good evening, Travis Bates. Could one of you run us through the timeline of what you know, what you don't know? When you watch some of the video that was published, I mean, you hear shots, then you pretty close to immediately start seeing flashlights. I'd like to know about response times, talk a little bit about what CSI was looking for, you know, what Jill was talking about. Guys, there was brass in the road right next to the house the next day. So I'm not convinced there was a lot of investigating that night. So I'd like to hear kind of the timeline of what happened that year.
So the first call came in at 2:43 in the morning. Our first deputy was on scene at 2:48 in my vehicle, we're fleeing. They continued looking, looking all around until, they didn't leave the scene until 4:54 in the morning. So you've got almost two, almost three hours of deputies in the area.
We found additional brass the next day, too.
Yes.
Right on 30 feet outside my bedroom.
Travis brought it to us. Sometimes it's a little difficult at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning to find every one of them when you found 26 already. It's sometimes hard to find others using flashlights.
I have a, I kind of want to direct something to Mr. Richards.
Sorry.
Teresa, my name is Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you. This isn't the single incident. I know Mr. Ryan was on TV shortly thereafter, a day or two after indicating. We know, we know the source of these issues in our community. We know the home from which these issues are emanating. He indicated this particular home 14 times since 2019. Law enforcement has been dispatched to this home. How many of you have parties at your house, right? How many of you have had law enforcement respond to your house? So that's one. What can we do there? In regard to the parties, I don't know, is there a public nuisance law on the books?
There is. Yeah, there's a, there's a public nuisance law, and it requires specific elements, and if they can put those together, then that'll be filed against, we got to figure the right people.
So I've probably done the wrong thing, because I haven't reported these things. I walk to church occasionally on Sunday mornings. On two occasions, I've picked up liquor bottles, beer bottles, some still with contents in them, on the streets surrounding this particular home on my way to church. I know some people might think it's funny to see the, a bishop carrying a bottle of Jack Daniels on Sunday morning.
Especially if it's half full.
Yeah. So we've had to deal with that. There was a morning a couple of years ago during a party at this particular house, two females entered my garage as my wife was coming home from taking care of her mom in the morning, because they had run from a fight at that home and were trying to find someone to help them and give them a ride. And presently, that next day, my house bases is right where the gunfire, 30 feet outside my bedroom window, my two-year-old grandson's bedroom window, 40 caliber brass in the road. My son moved his two-year-old to the basement of our home so that he would be below the concrete foundation of our house in the event that there's further gunfire and gunplay. I know this is not even, this isn't the first event. This is Ms. Megan back here, who lives directly behind this home, has dealt with gunfire here. How, what can we do when we have a community of people who aren't having law enforcement at their house on a continuous basis? What can we do to make it stop legally? What can we do? We can't live, I moved to Hooker from Roy 17 years ago, and it's been wonderful, and now we're afraid. My wife can't sleep. I mean, gunfire right outside my window, multiple rounds. And we know where it came from. People can say, well, people show up at our house. Somebody there is inviting this type of element into our community, and it has to stop. And we did, that's all we want. We want it to stop. And how do we do that? How do we legally make it stop? That's, that's all I have.
Good comments. Thank you.
So I'd like to finger, I speak for all of us, but.
Name.
Roman Pacebrook.
Thank you.
So I think the biggest frustration here, we talk about being proactive. For three, four years, our neighbors, I wish they would have called 14 times in a couple years. Our neighbors would be called on 14 times in two weeks at this, for years. And we always got told, "We know what's going on here."
It's a work in progress.
It's a work in progress. We know what's going on. We all know they're affiliated with the shooting at the arena a couple of weeks ago with that house. The same people are behind my house and the house that was shooting, that what the shooting at the arena was. They're interconnected. Everybody knows. They just, our neighbors got shut down for meth, they all went to that house. The shooting occurred, you guys shut that house down?
They're back.
They came back for three years. I think the whole frustration in this community is the key word that was given of being proactive. We all know what's going on, where it's happening, who's doing it. And trust me, I am the first person to say, "Thank you, guys." Back to the blue, I understand it is a very difficult color. But the whole frustrating thing for everybody here is this isn't just been, from my understanding, has not been going on just for a month. This has been going for years, years, but it continues. The people who were involved in the shooting at the arena are back at my neighbor's house behind me. We were told that they weren't supposed to be able to be on the premises after nightfall, that they're not supposed to live there. They're squatting in the shed, they're squatting in an RV. It's back, it's just back and forth, and everything's gone.
I know what it's like to be that scared wife. I'm there. Scares living daylights out of me.
Ma'am, can you give your name? Sorry.
My name is Leanne Robinson, and I live across the street from the house that Robert's talking about. And I come out here from peace and quiet, not for drugs going in and out of the house across the street from me all night long. I had my knee replaced in February and slept in a recliner in my living room. I said to my husband, "I cannot believe the traffic that goes in and out of that place all night long." And I, I come to council meetings about two years ago, and I told Mayor, Mayor Grin, "Why don't you come live at my house and see how safe your wife would feel? Because it's scary. It's scary, the amount of people that's over there, it's scary. It's scary. I'm that scared wife, and I don't feel like I should be in her room." Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, sorry.
I got something.
Name please.
Neil Ainsley. Uh, a few years ago I had problems. Couple of people probably already know. And on one incident, guy goes in the house after we had a confrontation a couple of times. Goes away. I called one, one of your deputies up. I says, what can I do to assist you guys to get rid of some of the red tape? In order to progress this thing, to get what was going on around my, our house? Some kind of stoppage or whatever we gotta do. So I says, we'll get some kind of a restraining order, whatever. And I says, well, restraining ain't gonna work cause I ain't married to the guy, for one. That's all's good for what I found out. So I got counsel to go get a stalking injunction. What's the stalking injunction, how's that enforced? That's a question for you guys right, right now. Cause what I read up on it, that particular person violated multiple times on that stalking injunction where you guys could have easily, from what I understand from other law enforcement, cause they kinda like it. The fact that they can go in and get the guy and he doesn't have to be present. The guy that, I had that on there to, to assist you guys in the city. He just, there's wire on him, freaking ducks back. Multiple times he violated. He violated going to church, parked right next to my truck. Everything, I can keep, I, the list goes on. So you guys got all this wonderful neat ideas of this code red deal. But the bottom line is, when are you guys gonna start enforcing what's on the books? That's where I'm coming from at. My deal could have been ea- easily amended a long time ago. Weaver County even, Weaver County Animal Service would have even done their job. And it, and it could have been resolved in the, in the biggest legal way. But Weaver County just says, well, we'll go talk to him. Cool? Well, here I am. Now I get, we got death threats, everything else that went on multiple times around my house. And the journeying joke around with our neighbors is, well, he must be working for the county because they're not doing anything. There was evidence there of a mobile meth lab, two guys walked right next to it. I don't know, I don't know, I'm, I'm.
Is this, I, I, I'm not familiar with your situation at all, is this recent?
It's been the past three, four years and then plus. This is, this is, what we're talking about is nothing new. It is nothing freaking new. And yet here we are, now all of a sudden, well, I guess we're gonna do something. Now thirty casings, plus casings are scattered around this street. So I'm at the point, I'm not gonna stick my neck out for it anymore. I'm more concerned what I have to do now, and, and I'm not alone on this, but I'm one of the outspoken ones. I, if I have to do something to protect my life or whatever I gotta do, I got two fronts to fight now. I've got the perpetrator to fight against, and it's you guys. I have to battle two fronts now. So I'm at the point, I gotta go, I'm gonna seek legal counsel, whatever I gotta do to protect my own deal from both sides of the arena, if you might wanna coin that phrase. So this is nothing new. And I, and it just, this is what's frustrating is now all of a sudden something's getting going. Bro, like, well, it's been going on for a long time. Neighbors called them, called them on bonfires. And, and the.
How many times we've been to these houses?
What's happened?
Said, do you know how many times we've been out with these houses?
Multiple times.
Tried to do it?
Multiple times.
Tried to illegally enforce the laws.
I don't know what you guys done because this happened so many times. We're all like, we don't know what. We don't know what you guys are enforcing. We, I think, well, maybe some undercover work's going on. Three years I had that. Three, three years, three years worth of multiple stalking injunction violations. What I read up on that.
Those were recorded?
Yeah, it's in your guys' name. I actually went and got the reports on a lot of them. And by your leg, it's in the reports, says, yeah, he violated, but we just went and counseled him.
And that's something we can look into. This is the first time I've ever had a conversation with you. Been over the Hooper City for the last year and a half. This is the first I've heard on your situation.
I've emailed everybody in Hooper City what's going on. Yes, I have, cause I got the email, right? Got the copy.
I mean, we're gonna have a conversation with you after and, and help work through that, see what we can do.
Well, I'm just letting you know. I'm just letting you know, this is the frustration. These people that are scattered down the road are dealing with right now. So I, the time I'm back out of my yard, up until, I guess they left, I don't know, we don't know. It's like a flip of a coin.
Get back over there.
Yeah, they're right, literally.
Cool?
They're on sixty-one hundred and the worst part about it is, sorry, my name's Megan. The worst part about it is, is our kids are having, they're going and hanging out at the parks. Doing drugs over there at the park and nobody cares. I've watched them, I drive past that park every day. And then they drive their little four-wheelers or whatever they have right back over to that house.
Which, which park could that?
Uh, Hooper City Park down there.
So three years if you go to, how often they.
Yeah.
Hooper Park.
And that's where they, that's where they go. Go, and my kids go over there. I don't even like my kids going over there. When this stuff happened, at least it happened two to three hours from, at the corner of sixty-three and fifty-five hundred west a couple of weeks ago. At least it happened two and a half, three hours before my kids, my high schoolers, had to go to that corner. It, it's coming to a point where, what are we supposed to do? They are literally squatting in the backyard of this house in trailers. You can go, you can drive right past it and see it, we can see it every day. There's trailers, they're all there.
What's the address that you were from to?
It's right in between, I wanna see, it's fifty-seven hundred south and fifty-nine hundred west. It's on the east side of the road on sixty-one hundred.
We talked about the itself?
The house is condemned, they can't even live in the house.
So, sir, back to, back to your point, I, I just wanna, I always wanna point out, um, I, I get the frustration. As, as Lieutenant Jefferies talked about, he's been in his position for about a year and a half. I've only been in my position for about a year and a half. We have a new street crimes unit that, uh, that we stood up, uh, about a year ago, uh, to kinda handle some of these. But personally, this is the first time that I'm aware of some of these problems. So we will put our street crimes unit on some of these problems. They don't go out and handle patrol calls, they go out and handle these kind of issues. So, so I'm taking notes to be able to look at that and try to handle it. So moving forward, we wanna work, you know, put our best efforts forward to handle this the right way and, and find a solution. We get frustrated sometimes with the system as well. But we will move forward doing our very best to bring resolution to these situations.
Well, the whole thing, but is right here, Mr., right here, this is your best resource right now. Very freaking best.
There, there's been multiple times where, like in a couple of months ago when I was here. I've got an eighteen-year-old daughter that hasn't been out in the backyard of our house in ten years. Because she's scared, because people stare at her. The same house, it was reported, there was a pre-teen girl years ago.
About three.
That would walk by that house to go babysit and they were harassing her. You guys got, called out because of them harassing this pre-teen girl. And the, the answer to the, that was given to the family was to tell their pre-teen girl to find a different way to walk. Here we are years later, my daughter's still, years later, has not been in the backyard of my house. Do you, that all?
Well, also, I'm just gonna end with this, the fact, the fact of the matter is, I put it legalized, documented in the courts. They granted the freaking, that injunction. I asked a couple of people and I even read for myself what, what the law stated at that time when I read it up. And if you, if that person gets two to three arrests on that stalking injunction, that's considered a felony. How many times that person violated that stalking injunction, it had three or four penalties behind that. So we're all like, what do you do? And I'm, so like I said, I'm at the point now, if I gotta do something, I gotta fight this front, two fronts now. The legal system and the purse. And that's what's frustrating right now is, we're all talking here and there's nothing in the works to possibly assist the person that has to do something that they don't wanna do. And I've already been in that position and I don't, don't ever wanna be in that position ever again. I don't know how you guys do it, how, day by day, you get yourself in that position. I don't like it. I've experienced it. The worst comes up is right down there at my house. I don't wanna ever be in that position ever again, ever. At all. So the bottom line is, where I'm coming from, you might wanna start enforcing what's on the freaking books to start with. That would be a plus right then and there. If there's an injunction on it, then by then, cross the Ts, dot the Is, cross the Zs so they don't like, like twos. Put the slashes to zeros so there are zeros. Cause it's obviously, we're working against people that don't wanna operate with rules, hence criminals. Where we have to operate with rules. And it's an unfair advantage if they're using it against us. But it looks like to me, with my experiences, we're on our own. And our group of neighbors down there, that's all we feel like, we're on our own. And even with the Weaver County Fire Department, they had a bonfire there. Neighbor crossed the street, calls it in. And this is not just a little bonfire. I looked out the front window of my house and the whole place is gone, I can hear orange. I walked out and there's flames coming up the top of this house. No one's around. Neighbor crosses the street, calls it in. And they say, your kid. He actually had to argue with dispatch to give him a number to send him a picture. They come back online, says, yeah, we're sending you in right now. Really? So if someone's getting hurt, do I gotta send a picture to dispatch and say, hey, you know, there's proof I'm getting hurt? Cause that's where we're feeling like, right now in my area.
My name's Jason Howard. I just wanna share, it sounds like there's a lot, there's a whole lot of frustration in this room. And I think as citizens, we moved out here for a reason. We love Hooper City. There's so much to offer in, in this great community. But it's, we gotta, we gotta figure out, how, how quick can we get an ordinance on the books? Like what, you know, how's that gonna help? I mean, we used to talk about experience from other officers coming from other places. What does that look like as far as a real world solution for our current problem here in Hooper City? Um, you know, is lights the answer? I mean, I know that forty-eight twenty-five and that fifty-one hundred intersection, I mean, I, I wouldn't wanna walk down there at midnight because there's no lights. So what does that look like, you know, for, do we need to light more areas? Do we need to have more of our neighbors just turn on our lights every single night so that we're lighting up the entire neighborhood? I don't know what the solution is, but I would love to hear, you know, more from, from your perspective. What can, what can we do? What is, what is a solution? You know, what, what does the solution look like from that ordinance perspective? What other things can we do to help support and just, you know, be, I hate to, I hate to, I hate to even use the word reactive because I would not wanna be in a reactive situation, but that's kinda where we're, where we're at when we talk, we talk so much about proactivity. So just love to hear solutions.
So I'll tell you, I mean, Hooper City for sure is probably one of the darkest places there is at night.
Yeah.
The whole city, there's not lights around, whether houses or streetlights or anything, it's always dark. I've patrolled out here for years and, and always realized it's dark. And if somebody commits a crime and takes off, very hard to find them with, with a couple of flashlights when it's nothing but dark out here. So I would agree with you on that.
How do we do that as a city? Do we, like, how do we get more lights?
Uh, that would be something that this, this city council could help you with.
Okay.
Can we shine them on the corner of forty-eight twenty-five and fifty-one hundred?
By the park. What about cameras? What about adding cameras in that area?
A name? I don't know where it came from.
I'm sorry, Candy Parker.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of cameras? Your, your personal ones or the, the city putting up cameras?
Well, neither, either. If you lack evidence on the crimes, why not put up some cameras?
I'm a, I'm a big, I'm a big fan of cameras.
Yeah, like street cameras, just even on big intersections like.
We know where they need to be.
Problem with the city putting up cameras, now you're, now you're playing the big brother game. Which a lot of you are not gonna be happy with if, if the city's recording your every movement and then looking at those. So you as citizens, if you wanna put them all over your houses, absolutely. And then if something happens, it, it helps us to locate criminals or whoever's involved. But, I mean, if, if the city would like cameras, it would like the city council to put them up, that's, that's up to you guys.
That's, yeah, that's a city issue.
But it's a solution, right? There, we're.
Yeah.
So.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of cameras.
For the law enforcement perspective, cameras are, cameras are a great tool.
Like, if there, if we know of a specific address that is having issues, is there a way to put a flag on that address? So as soon as calls come in at twelve oh one or whatever, the noise ordinance starts? Um, is there a way to make officers come and make sure the party disperses? Because the instances at that particular house usually are between the hours of one and three AM, which is past the noise ordinance, right? Is there a way to flag a certain residence legally to say, this party has dispersed, once noise ordinance starts? We'll stay here until like, it looks like the, I, I don't know how, is there a way to do something like that?
Basically word of mouth is going to do that. I think all of our officers at this point are aware of the address.
Okay, so as citizens, just start, what's noise ordinance on the weekends, twelve?
We're actually, doesn't mean there, there is no city.
Okay, so we need to start with a noise ordinance in the city. Get lights, get cameras, and then we can enforce the noise ordinance? Okay, so, city council meeting next, right?
Hey, well, I, I just wanna make a comment on that because I think this is where we start to come up with how the citizens can help. You know, an idea that just came across was permits. And at first it seemed really good, but, so let's say someone wants to have a party. You put a limit on it, they come into the city, they have to get a permit. They have now flagged their house that there's going to be a party. The question is, what type of party? How many people do we have them have before they come in and get a permit? We wouldn't have to charge for it, but we would know where there's a party taking place in the city. Would, would that, see, these are the kinds of things that as soon as we talk about flagging a house and we say, well, there is a way to flag a house. We let them flag it themselves with something like that word. But what, what we need to know is, from the citizens, what really are you willing to do to help the sheriff's office do their job? We, we need to be a team. We all need to work at this together because we are the eyes and the ears, as, as it's been pointed out, of the whole city.
Well, I don't think if we didn't necessarily need, we need like a party, I think it needs to start with the noise ordinance. Because I wanna have parties at my house and I don't wanna have to come to the city every time I have a Fourth of July party. But what I do want is if we start with the noise ordinance and say, on the weekends, it's midnight. There are plenty of times that I can call on my neighborhood after midnight. And if we, like, if, uh, if law enforcement knows about particular houses that have issues of fighting or gunshots and if, so if a neighbor calls on that particular house, they know to go out there and disperse it, you know? A regular house that doesn't have any calls on it and has a noise ordinance or whatever, just, that's fine. They can go and be like, hey, time to break it up or whatever. But they know what kind of response they have to make. I'm just thinking about like noise or, I don't want like.
It's not our parties that are the problem.
But the problem is you can't single one household out over everybody else. Even if they're the problem, you can't say, you can't have Thanksgiving in your house if it's ten or fourteen years.
I agree. Even the houses will probably.
Put the guns out and start shooting.
If, if we can find who did that, we're more than happy to prosecute them.
They did it at the house.
That's the problem.
And it know what house.
So that the house is not the problem.
So I have a question and I think it kinda relates to what the gentleman was talking about over here, but what I would like to see is a zero tolerance approach. Right? There is things that you can do to target houses to happen and you were part of it right next door to my house. And it does take citizen action and it doesn't have to be a misdemeanor, it could be a pair of binoculars and a notebook, write down license plate numbers. Write down all those license plate numbers and two guns going to that house because that is a huge tool for law enforcement. But a zero tolerance approach, when you go into a party, if you have underage drinking, you have, you can take their IDs if there's alcohol there. I get ID if I go to Maverick and I'm getting one years old. You can run for warrants. Public info, disorderly conduct. I'm, I'm pretty amazed that there's no, nothing has been filed against anybody in this party. But it kinda sets a precedence that, hey, look, this community is not gonna tolerate this.
To answer some of that, has been citations and a. To answer some of that, has been citations and arrests made at that particular house.
Okay, and, and it, it sets a precedence that we're not going to tolerate this kind of activity. So you can target a house that's a problem house. And don't get me wrong, this neighborhood's pretty welcoming. I mean, we had a, a Mongols chapter president that lived inside of our neighborhood. They got escorted by Sergeant Roberts, Lieutenant, intelers driving down to our neighborhood. But we never had these kind of problems with him here, right? And so I think that, um, there's a lot of things that can happen on the sheriff's office side. It can be a little bit critical, it's not communication was pretty poor. It was two days after the first statement we got from the sheriff's office. And then anytime anybody called, it was downplayed, and all that does is bring up emotions even more. And I think Cora, you yourself said you don't use it because nobody signs up for it. I've been signed up for it, and I don't think I've ever gotten anything on Cora. But you do have a great tool, it's Facebook. And I went through and looked at Facebook, and there's not really anybody posting on Facebook about like, "Hey, we're been in your neighborhood, we're in your neighborhood. Um, this is what happened." Facebook would be an awesome tool, because guess what? Who has Facebook here? Everybody, everybody. And I went to the sheriff's office webpage and see if I could find information there, and I think that that could be updated. The last Hooker City report was from two thousand thirteen.
This whole incident was on Facebook, from the sheriff, they said this whole incident was on Facebook from the sheriff's office page. What you're saying, the last time it was updated was two thousand nineteen? Two, well, I guess.
Anyway, that's, that's my request, is a zero tolerance. So they have these kind of calls in houses, it's worked before, I've seen it work, you were part of that. And I appreciate it, it's been great since. Um, and, uh, I think it's more about permission, proactive policing. I don't like the idea of permits, it kind of seems kind of a pro-laborist scheme. Um, but yeah, and whatever we can do to help get your staffing up for Hooker City specific. And I understand it costs a lot of money, but I support that. I'd like to see more officers in our street. So whatever you help me with that, I would support it.
Okay, one second, please, just one second. I couldn't hear your name.
Brandon Rowan.
Thank you so much.
Fifty-one.
The permit thing is not, I don't want you to think I'm out. I was, that thought came as you were talking about, how do we identify houses? And how do you flag? We don't, and as soon as you come up with an idea, something like, we don't think that's the right thing to do. And if this is not the right thing to do, we don't do it. But we need to, we actually need to come up with some ideas.
I let you away, because I do, but I just tried to get people to do it.
Scott, Scott Weaver.
Thank you.
I might suggest that, I, I like everything I hear here, the permit ideas, the noise ordinance things, good. That's all anecdotal evidence. Empirical evidence that the sheriffs could act upon is a, a road parking ordinance. I mean, on any given weekend, there are twenty to thirty cars parked in that intersection, okay? That, that is something that you can count on. And you can call the sheriff and say, "There are forty cars parked here." That's in violation of an ordinance. And it's, that, that's not subjective. It's not, well, I think it's kind of loud, maybe it's not, but, but I can count cars. I don't know how many people are in the house, but I can count cars. So, just an idea.
What if they're parked in front of a fire hydrant?
Or a stop sign.
Or no parking sign.
I'm just trying to suggest things, because I understand you guys are a little bit handcuffed.
This is a good point.
No, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, I appreciate that idea, it's a great idea. I just, I think when you consider, when the council considers, you just need to think about equal enforcement across the board, right? Thanksgiving parties, Chris, how's that gonna impact? Uh, it's a great idea, it's one I hadn't thought of, so I appreciate it. But, but the council, probably I would just consider what that looks like across the board.
Ken Anderson. So just, I got two things. So the first thing, you mentioned the communication that went out on Facebook, the press release that came out, those kinds of things, that's really appreciated. I will say, it was a bit egregious and a bit arrogant to make a statement that all the rounds were quiet in the air when our neighborhood is by the shell casings sixty, eighty, a hundred and fifty feet away from where the house is. So that was a little bit of an insult to, I think, the collective intelligence. It's a bit egregious and it's a bit arrogant.
The rea- the reason that was put out is because so far, there's one reporting of a, of a bullet actually striking a structure, so that's why we're...
What about all the video footage? It's a piece of line that I know is...
There were video footage of bullets going into houses?
Uh, video footage of automobiles driving, firing shots, where you can see muzzle flashes out the car, but yet we're...
Are those in the air or are those at...
If you can get, if you can get a license, does that matter? No, actually.
Just by saying that they were firing in the air.
How intensely they're firing, how the street is firing right here.
But there's only been one report of it, it's striking something, it's all telling.
Ken, you have valid proof? You have valid proof?
Yeah, the semantics too is, is not really that welcome. Uh, but that's cool, you can, you can take that position. The second thing, uh, Reed, and I respect it, but I've got a question for you as pertains to this ordi- ordinance. Don't we already have laws that prohibit illicit drugs, underage drinking, discharge of firearm and city limits? So maybe you could, if you would, sir, could you help me understand how a city ordinance is going to make the laws that are already on the books and the things that are already illegal, make those laws more of a plus? To enable them to do the, uh, their job, which is a difficult job. I'm a, I'm, don't mistake me, I'm a huge supporter of the police, always have been. But could you maybe help me understand that just a little bit, sir?
Sure. Uh, there is no fantasy here. We haven't gotten anything that's, that's going to solve every problem, but I think there are some things that, that can be done that might help. Uh, you're right, illegal drugs are illegal, and people can be arrested for it. Uh, but that requires that you identify an individual and show that they possess the drugs. Uh, the same thing with youth and alcohol. This ordinance would be a civil ordinance, number one, less burden of proof, so it's a lot easier for a, a person to take that into court and win. Uh, secondly, it, it, uh, is aimed at the person who sponsors the party. So if the noise is there and the person sponsors the party, then that's the person that we assess the fine, the fine against. We couldn't put them in jail, wouldn't be a criminal violation, it would be a civil violation. So easier to enforce, uh, easier to prove. Those would be the two factors for that type of an ordinance.
Thank you.
And it, just to clarify, Reed, it, it doesn't prevent the criminal charge either? You can, you can do both at the same time? So if you have, if you have the, the criminal elements, then you can, then you can hit it from that approach as well as the civil fine?
My name is Mike Larson. Hi, for me, it's two things. One is, I think we need to realize that there's no one answer to this, like we said multiple times. But at the same time, we need to realize that it's not everyone in this community, right? If it's one house, I live a few streets away, we heard everything, but I can't speak to which house it is actually. Because it's obvious, everyone knows what we're talking about, what house we're talking about. Remember that it's that house, it's not the neighborhood, right? So when we start making laws, my biggest concern is that, and I'll take the party, you know, I, I, party ordinance, I get that you were, it's an example. But I would hesitate if the ordinance is in place to fix the problem in the moment, it will cause more problems in the long term. I think the biggest thing we can do, and I thought we had, I thought there was one thing either, we were having things in Utah overall that was an amplified noise ordinance, that you can't have amplified noise after ten PM that goes over seventy-five decibels. That's an easy one to put on the books, I'm surprised we don't have some sort of noise ordinance already. But it gives the opportunity for law enforcement to get in there. And at that moment, anything they see is all sorts of nonsense. The second thing for me is, there seems to be a pretty big disconnect between what we see and what you guys have, which very everyone knows, but you guys know about that better than we do. How do we close that gap? How do I know in the previous places I lived, there'd been a monthly meeting where you guys sent one or two of your, uh, your officers there, you sent whoever has issues or no stuff, and you just have this half hour, hour long meeting going, and you guys might want to check this out. It's a hard scene, a perfect opportunity for you guys to jump in. If there are people that want to call or that don't know if they should, it's a great way for you guys to do that. Legally, trying to see all that stuff, so I haven't done it where I stand, but I know other cities have done it, and we might want to do it.
So with, with that meeting portion, I come to, to almost every city council meeting. More than welcome to come and, and talk to me at any point at those meetings. Or after, I, I spend a lot of time talking to people at those meetings.
And, and I appreciate that, and I think you, even if it was, like I said, just for thirty minutes, we're going to be at this point in time to have a dedicated time log with lots of people here and see the city council, and we see that agenda. And then, it's like I do it all the time, I see the agenda, okay, nothing affects me or nothing that I care about, I'm just not going to go. But if we have a, I'm going to be from seven to seven thirty on Thursday of the month. We're going to be here and be able to talk, be able to answer your questions. Then it builds that community, so you guys can come to us, come and get the answers, and we can get the answers.
One more thing. Fine, eh? What is the state provision of self-defense? What, I mean, what is a known crap deal? If you're facing a situation of what's going on, what is the basic self-defense in yourself? Would need to speak with the attorneys on that.
Well, basically, you can defend yourself if you're legitimately threatened, you can take reasonable...
What's, what's defined as legitimate threat?
Well, that's the problem, that is defined as, the jury's going to answer.
Correct. So where is, where's the line getting drawn to where you can defend yourself without having to battle everything else? You can't, correct?
You can use reasonable efforts to defend yourself against a legitimate threat.
Yes, true. Okay, I'm on the phone with dispatch, and they're saying I can't do anything because I called the cops. I can't do anything, that's exact words, it's on tape, I got it on tape.
Well, that's not true.
No, it is true, because I got it on tape, sir. They said, they said, "If you call the cops, you can't do nothing." So I'm standing there going...
We, we can look into that.
What, what do I do here?
With dispatch, if you've got that tape, share it with us, I can get with dispatch and we can look into it.
This ain't a freaking joke and matter, sir. I don't know why you're over there smirking.
I, I'm just wondering about your question. Uh, I thought I answered the question, and that is, if, if you feel like you're legitimately threatened, you can take reasonable action to defend yourself.
Okay, so I'm on dispatch again. They say you can't do nothing because you called the cops.
I don't, that doesn't make any sense.
You're right, it doesn't. And that's what I was doing. I'm on the phone, holding the freaking animal that's causing all the crap. You're over there threatening me to do whatever they want to do. And they're saying, "Well, you can't call the cops, or you can't do nothing because you called the cops." So I'm like, let's...
We don't, we're not tied to dispatch, they're a separate entity, but we can look into that for you if you, we can help you get an answer to that.
So this is the frustration, at least on my end, maybe a couple others in here. Where is that line going to get drawn? Where is the line going to be to where you have to stand your ground? What is the law that you gotta do? You answered it, I get it, but what is the determining factor? Because like I said, if you, I've been trained on some of this. I've talked to other cops, trained with other cops. What is the determining line of where you have to use reasonable force, that you will not be prosecuted that side defending? Your home and your family and whatever else?
Situations and different...
Correct.
So we can't give you a, a straight line, like you being a bigger male versus a small female. Like, there's different circumstances on who actually feels threatened on any given time.
I really do. But that's the frustration, at least myself and maybe a couple others, might feel about this. If we gotta do something, if we gotta do something that's drastic, that we don't want to do...
Those, those are state and federal laws that you need to change or get a specific, here's the line I'm saying.
And that's, and that's what I'm trying to get established here. And that's what I'm trying to get established here, maybe something small where you can push back on upper echelon as it goes along. It needs to start here, and that's what I'm trying to say. Something around on the line, the line in the sand's gotta be drawn where there's no deal going on here. These guys, like I said, they, these people here, you can invest resources.
All, all...
And they, and they need, and they need, everybody here needs that line of defense, heavily that. Probably more so than ever.
Please don't speak for me, sir.
Fine, I don't care. But I do, because I've experienced it.
You can speak for me.
So that's what I'm saying, this is the frustration I've had for, since all this has gone on. And that's what I think needs to get addressed. Permits, bottles, okay, that's not right, that's not good. But I know, in the situation, you're going to have to do something. And that's the frustrating part, what we do, what do I do?
I'll stay long.
Leah Jones. I just wanted to mention that, when these, those people moved in, I live in West Ham, it's a one block over. And so when those people moved in, the big rumor around the whole area was that there's multiple families. This is a single residential home, a dumb single residential. That should be a key right there that something's going on. And I know that people will be coming in, that there's been some laps where people have additional rentals and additional people put trailers up in their yards or whatever. But I think that that was a good point where there's so many cars, there's more than one family in that, in that house. So I think that is a way for an investigation to start, because they're, they're, um, going against the zoning laws right now.
Corey Whitaker. Uh, I live one block to the north. I moved from the center of Ogden, where we listen to sirens eight years straight. Uh, had a drug dealer, meth house right across the street. Actually became pretty good friends with the owner of the house. But there are things that I know, I, I've worked through Ogden to make this work, that they kept eyes on that house. Uh, I installed six cameras on front of my house, three of them directly at that house specifically. Uh, not to say that that information wasn't used on repeated cases. Uh, that, that's probably a good move, like, you know, I've been in our house now for three years now. Um, I have had to clear out my backyard three different times from parties at a certain residence. This last go-round, we detained a vehicle full of ve- full of individuals and three other individuals in not only my backyard, the next neighbor, and not only after that, twenty minutes after the police had vaporized, we had another individual come walking out of my backyard after I already did a sweep and cleaned everything up. Called dispatch. Their exact words were, "We're overloaded, direct them back to the party." What do we do? We're literally watching them work, where we have individuals with officers in front of the car. And I respect that, and I'm grateful for you guys, you all. I see another six individuals running down the ditch bank. Pull my cameras up. All you see is blurbs running down the ditch bank. I, I, I'm game for more patrol. My house has been drugged off three times in the last two years. Like, there's not enough patrol at all. And I come from Ogden where we literally, Chester and Liberty, I mean, you guys in Weaver County know what those, that street is. Like, it is, there, there's at least two patrols a day through that area. From different unmarked peoples. I mean, there, there, there might be a good idea there, you know?
And like, like the chief spoke to with their new unit, there's a lot of that going on, and we'll get them out here as well. What about with some of that?
Do we have a public nuisance law in Hooker? Officials?
Yeah, there's a state public nuisance law.
A state? Do we enforce that as a city? No. Can we?
Sure, we should.
What, uh, besides the noise ordinance is one thing, public nuisance is another. How do we offer assistance, or how do we enforce a public nuisance? Citation of some sort?
Maybe Hooker needs our own police department.
You can't, you can't afford that.
Maybe, let's ask them to straighten things sometime. But there hasn't been work being changed. Maybe, maybe take control of our city, and maybe we need our own police department, and we can be like, do their job.
I, I just, at three o'clock at night, I don't want random drunk individuals that I know are under the age of twenty-one, but they have no identification on them, but you can see a wallet in their pocket, and they're all saying they're over twenty-one, standing on my front porch after the shooting, with my wife and next to my child, neighbor. And I come out and, "What do you want, nigger?" How do I defend my property and my neighbors and my family when they say that? And I take offense to that, where especially because I have a half-black sister and three black nephews. Where does that right come in? Where does that lie come in? What do we do?
How do we get ordinances passed in the city? Like, it's, the city council is here, right? So are they, like, writing down the things that we're talking about, ordinance-wise? Like noise ordinances, the lights, cameras, action, all that?
Lights, yeah.
We, we, are, can we go through my list?
Yeah, I just.
I, I really have, and I, you know, I think that's, I think that's a real positive thing. Because it's something we can actually do, and hopefully, it makes a difference. I mean, I, some of these things, uh, I don't know what we do. I, I really don't.
I think we could just send ordinances for common, or I see for people, for noise ordinances. The land house, uh, had twenty-four, seven yard sale for three sixty-five, like, we asked about a yard sale ordinance. Like, why should people have a, like, just, uh, and running an actual business, other property? Like, just simple ordinances that give us peace and quiet and security, that can be enforced by the city ordinances.
I think that's a great idea. And, and it is something, that's something the city can do, and we can actually do that. I mean, there are, there have been a few positive, uh, experiences that we've had down on sixty-three hundred West. With the house there that has been cleaned up, and the person that lived there has been moved to.
Just because they moved doesn't mean the problem's solved.
Problem is the.
They're not gone.
It moved, it moved.
It moved to another house.
On sixty-one hundred, that's what we were talking about. There are fifty, like, there's eighty.
Sixty-one hundred.
Where's sixty-one hundred?
They're, they're back to the house where, that I came to you guys a couple months ago.
Right.
And then I talked to you about it, because finally, they, they found that.
Where the, where the shots were.
Well, um, I think we've had, I hope this meeting's been productive. I, I know there's been a lot of, uh, people that are, we just get tired, it's things being unsafe. But we've gotta start somewhere, and we started this meeting out by saying, we, we need to be a team. All together with the sheriff's department, our legal counsel, and our citizens. But there's nothing better than having good neighborhood watches. People that are watching out, knowing what's going on in the neighborhood, and, and call the sheriff's department, right? I'd like to think if you call them, I know one of the things that's been a concern is the, the amount of response time. But it's not like you can always be sitting on every block out here, but I think all we need to hear is that you're, you're doing your best. Honestly, uh, since we've had, you know, a different, uh, kind of a change in who's been looking over Hooper, I think we've had, had, I think we've had good response times.
Hey, Mayor, I, I have a question that, um, what does coverage out here look like? I know some parts of Weaver County have de, dedicated, uh, not necessarily patrolmen, but what, what does coverage? I, I get resources.
And, and Hooper used to have that, we had, used to have a resource officer that was here every day, and we don't have that anymore.
I get resources are thin, and officers are hard to come by, what does coverage in western Weaver County, particularly Hooper? You know, and look, I, I know there's, I know everybody likes to talk about West Haven, because West Haven's grown so big, so I know a lot of resources go there too. But what, what do we see out here on a Friday and Saturday night, Hooper?
Says is Hooper, we care about you. We are so glad that we can be here tonight, and I'm so thankful to hear every single complaint. Most of you know that I'm the elected sheriff, we have a large burden. And I just heard your question, this is something that's been pissing me off for years. About ten years ago, the Weaver County Sheriff's Office had a hundred and five deputies to patrol the county. We have been cut down to seventy-two. I'm not blaming us, I'm not blaming you, I'm not crying about anything. We can do anything. We can't do everything. The commission and the county of the cities made an agreement years ago, that Reed was a part of, that they wanted a service. I do not favor just a service. I want every single city to have dedicated deputies. But there's a cost. Significant cost. When I got into this game twenty-five years ago, just for example, the average officer outfitted is around four grand. The vest, the gun, et cetera. Does anybody have idea what it costs now? It's about six to eight grand, just, just what they're wearing. It's expensive. My very first priority is public safety. We do the best we can with the resources that we get from the county and the cities. Yes, we're stretched thin. When I, when we had a hundred and five deputies out on the road, we only have two hundred thousand residents in the whole county. Now we're approaching two hundred and seventy. When I got into this business, a domestic violence call, took about an hour and a half with about two deputies, more officers to handle. Now, it's three to four, and it's around three hours. This is the burden that we bear, and we are love, we, we want to do it. In my twenty-five years, I've had a lot of experience. I served at the marshal's office in Missouri. I started in Weaver County in ninety-seven for a few months, fulfilled the city for a long time. As you mostly know, I was the chief of the small town parrot. What you guys are going through are some real serious growing pains. There's nothing more that I want, is to have a community like you guys now, I live in North Bottom. We all want this, but you guys are going through some serious growing pains. This is not the time to divide us against you. This is the time to come together, and say, we don't like this, we don't like that, and not what the problem is, we all know what the problem is. But this is the opportunity to come together, just like we did tonight, ask questions, share resources, come together. And I know this is cliche, but it's true, back then, it's true today, we have to unify. We do, we have to unify. And there's a lot in here that want that. And so with that, what we do moving forward, we have a lot of resources. In fact, the new contract that we put in this year with, uh, all the cities, is they maintain the service. We added an aleckhart for the cities to add officers for situations like this. Out of the eight cities, guess how many cities asked for additional officers? None. None.
What's the cost?
About a hundred and fifty thousand per officer.
Per year?
Per year. And if you counted with the, we're, we're, we're the cheapest. Because I know you citizens are, and I hear that all the time, we want to do more, it's complicated. Mayor Fowers is doing the best that he can, we got a great partnership, but there are costs. As soon as we ask for more money, uh, we see, we see people that just throw fits. But I can assure you, hearing the briefings about this situation, we are not letting this rest. We are not denary. We are pulling in resources from other agencies, including our own, and we're seeing guys that are dedicated, passionately working every bit of their shift to find answers. It's hard. One last thing, and I'll, and I'll just close. When I got in this business again twenty years ago, I'd see a typical traffic violation of a stop sign. We'd go to court, the judge would say, sir, what'd you see? I didn't know the stop sign, the, the officer was mistaken, but officer, what'd you see? Well, I was stationed here, my was, my vision was focused on this, he clearly didn't stop, yada, yada. That was enough for the judge. That is no longer the case. Where's your video? Who are your witnesses? If you don't have that, we don't have a case, and it's dismissed. The burden of proof on law enforcement is tough. We do it, and we can do it, we're gonna continue to do it. We're gonna take every bit of resource and make the best we can out of it. And I know you're probably tired, let's say we need your help, but we do. The best law enforcement agency that you can have is when you have partnership with the public. With that, I'll close, be done, turn back, we're meeting. I'm gonna stay here till eight or nine o'clock, if you guys wanna have a Q and A with me. Thank you again for your support, the Weaver County Sheriff's Office, and all those individuals, thank you.
Well, we, we really appreciate you coming, Reed, we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate all of you coming. I, uh, my son-in-law did give me, uh, a quote, he was back in Philadelphia, and he saw this on a marquee, and I think it ties in with just what you said, Sheriff. It was a marquee on a law building, and it said this, even though you know you did, doesn't mean you're guilty. And I think that's what, I think that's what we're all faced with sometimes, um. We have to have good evidence, we have to have good proof. But anyway.
I'm sorry to interrupt, sir, can you help us manage expectations on the ordinance? How long will an ordinance take to be put in place?
Well, um.
Is this a three-day or three-year situation?
I'm happy to show you that our, our city attorney has already, a draft already written up, as far as, you know, uh, an ordinance on parties and things. I think we can move this to the city council, and we'll notice it, as that, but no, Reed, Reed does, he moves things fast, when he knows what he's supposed to do.
Can we expect ordinance in a month?
It's on the agenda to, it will be on the agenda for the second council meeting in November, which is the third Thursday.
Which ordinance?
The party, which includes noise also.
Parties, gatherings, and events.
So we have to have, I think it has to be noticed, so that's the problem we face.
Well, you can notice, you can put it on for this week, discussion.
Yeah.
As long as you get it out twenty-four hours.
So just for discussion, or can we have a motion made? Just tell me yes or no, Reed?
Yes.
Okay, so it can be moved to this Thursday's meeting, so.
Okay, and that will give, we'll make sure all the, the council has a chance to review this, so you know what we're possibly on.
Yeah, seven to five.
We have a question back here.
Just a quick comment. I appreciate all the law enforcement concerns, I appreciate you taking your time out, uh, tonight, Mayor Reed, appreciate you being here. I did actually, I don't want to have the last word, but I did just want to make a quick comment, something that struck me. If there is a perception, or has been a perception, that this meeting is to create some level of division between the citizens and the police department, I, I can only speak for myself, I think that's an incorrect perception. What I'm after is just simple accountability, our elected leaders, our elected officials, and the police department that we contract with. Be it a, a meager amount of resources, I get that, I certainly understand budget constraints, and I understand the current environment that we're operating in. But if there is a, again, a perception that there is some level of division, in my opinion, that's completely incorrect. And for myself, I'll do whatever's necessary, whatever's required, to make sure that something that happened last weekend doesn't happen again. So that's it, I did not, I think that's great.
And I agree with that, what was that number to get that one officer of some sort to our city? Hundred and fifty thousand. What is the cost to put in all those pickleballs? I, I would want, I look at. Why are we as citizens, people who are not allowed to vote on that, you and that? I haven't seen anything. I read our little newspaper that's beautiful, the color, Black Widow's mine, to save us some money. But we do need them, and I have a lot of stuff for you to.
I think we're all happy to pay the cost to help these people. Okay, well, I appreciate, I appreciate that. Any other comments, or?
I got one, please.
A name, can I get a name, please?
Uh, Mavericks, Sullivan.
Thank you.
Uh, just, just kind of like when we were saying, sir, like, with the frustrations and the means, I mean, I hope you guys all do your areas good, things, and you call the officers. Like, I, I, the other day, I was, well, it's about a year ago, I had to shout out all my distressed code in, don't know why. But by the time I was even back in the shopping cup coffee, I mean, I had five officers at my house checking it out. It was phenomenal, okay, great, because I was in trouble, my family's in trouble, appreciate that. But even just for our community, I mean, pickball for, we have to grow as a community. But I mean, we have to grow, we can't have one house that keeps cutting down, keeping us from growing. But I just ask that everybody who is here, I mean, you do see the tin cars, just call. I mean, we know they're short resource, but if we all keep our eyes up and keep them coming, make sure they know we're not gonna tolerate that, I think, I think we're moving in the right direction. So, that, that's all I have to say, but. Yeah, exactly. Life's a lot of ways, a lot that doesn't come us up, I mean, I got multiple neighbors that are cross-직, retired officers. And I, I know exactly what you guys go through, my father's retired officer, so, but I do, I do appreciate it, and just, that's what I have to say. We'll just, let's do our parts, man, let's make sure they know we're not gonna do it, so.
Okay, well, thank you again, uh, again, we really do appreciate all of you. Yes.
I just wanna say, I really appreciate the sheriff's department and everything you do. You guys came to my house at nine-thirty to collect video, and that, you're going door to door. That, I don't think any, a, a whole lot of people in this room realize, that the work that they're doing, we have to be, we have to stand behind them to give them the evidence, and the, and the video, and the picture, whatever you have.
Athens, Athens.
Yes.
Everybody's gonna work in community, everyone's have.
Exactly.
Doesn't matter during the day, if it's something that anybody.
I want you guys to know that everybody in this room appreciates everything that you guys do.